All the homes I grew up in, they don't have a hometown anymore. My hometown of Brentwood has been in the red flag area. My sister lives in the valley and my brother in Woodland Hills, both red flag area. So it's been like pins and needles for most of my family and friends down in Southern California. So I just wanted to take this time to pass for a moment of silence to honor the resilience of these working, tireless people out down there that are just having a hard time dealing with what they're dealing with and to keep others safe. Okay? Thank you. Moment of silence. Thank you very much. Kirk Golden?
All right, members of the public can view the meeting live on YouTube and the link is posted on the agenda. Members of the public are hereby notified that meetings of the Board of Directors are recorded and requests for the video and audio recordings may be made to the clerk of the board. At this time, I'd like to welcome up Lynn Lava P A, Students' liaison homeless services for Folsom Cordova Unified School District. And then after the pledge, Human Resource Manager Andrea White will say a few words.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you Chair of the Board and Board of Directors. I'm so excited to have Lynn come visit us this evening. Lynn and I have been working together for, I would say, over a year, almost two years at this point. So Lynn is my contact at Folsom Cordova Unified School District. She specifically works with families in transition and she lets me know what do the students need, what do the families need? And as you've seen, every time we have a district event, we collect and gather whatever, all the staff, board members too, collect what they need the most for these families. So over the year, you know, we've collected school supplies, we've collected sweaters, sweatshirts, backpacks, socks, underwear, and most recently, we collected over fourteen hundred dollars in gift cards for Target and the Dollar Tree, which thank you to everyone who participated in that. But Lynn is a delight to work with and we're always excited when we get to see each other. And we're just back here, you know, quietly scheming on a whole nother thing that we want to do to, not scheming, but to, like, what else can we do and sponsor some families to make sure that they have good holidays on top of what we're already doing. So thank you so much Lynn for your partnership.
Thank you, thank you so much for all the tremendous help that you've been giving us and for supporting us. It has made a great impact to the students that are in transition. So it will be hard to do our job without all your support. Thank you so much.
Lynn, you can just imagine what's going on down South California with, I know that two elementary schools and my high school, they're all been displaced, everyone in the community is homeless now and it's going crazy down there. But you're getting support from all over the United States, things are coming in. It's fabulous though, the way the people are, you know, coming to the rescue.
Right, my heart goes out to them. I really feel their pain right now, so, yeah. So with my prayers, I hope everything will be okay and that those families will get the support that they need.
The high school is back on remote, they're at home, I mean, they're doing it on computer back again. The elementary school kids have gone, some of them have gone to other elementary schools, but now those schools were affected, so I don't know what they're doing now. Thank you Lynn, it's a pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Oh boy. The next thing for us is standing action item two.
Item two, standing action item A B two four four nine requests.
Oh yeah.
This is the portion of the meeting where we deal with any requests to join remotely through A B two four four nine, and we receive no requests, so it will be listed as no action taken.
Thank you very much. With that, we take a roll.
Director Danzel?
Here.
Director Yearwood?
Here.
Secretary Mattis?
Here.
Vice Chair Langen?
Here.
Chair Sloan?
Here. Thank you Shelby. We're on number B, comments of the public.
Members of the public may address the board on topics within the district's jurisdiction that are not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Or members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And at this time, we have no requests.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item C, our consent calendar. Anybody from the audience like to pull any of the consent calendar items? I don't see any. Board members?
Does she have to announce it first?
I don't know.
I can do a brief blurb. So consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on items prior to approval of the consent calendar, and this evening, we have four items for your consideration.
Okay, well, nobody wants to pull any, so I guess I'll take a motion from someone.
Chair Sloan, I'll make the motion that we approve consent calendar items C one through C four.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Director Yearwood and a second from Director, Secretary Mattis. Will call them.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Thank you. So now we're going to head into D, presentation. So we have one, presentation by staff, 2024 Year in Review.
Yes, item D one, presentation by staff on the 2024 Year in Review, and I'll take it on down to the podium for the presentation.
She does it all.
She introduced it. She introduced it.
Walkie music.
All right, so good evening, Chair Sloan and members of the board. Welcome to the 2024 Year in Review. Woo-hoo! I'm excited to bring this new publication to you tonight. As you can see, we are even more official with our publication this year, and this is a great collaboration between all of our departments that really showcase what we have done throughout the year. Ooh, skipped ahead a little bit there, okay. I want to thank all the staff members for their work on this, and special thanks to our communications and marketing analyst, Elena Berger, for designing this to really connect with the community and be a little more engaging. And so I'll just go through the publication and then I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at the end. So first up, we have our Who We Are section. So as you know, as you all know, we're an independent special district governed by an elected Board of Directors. Congratulations again to Chair Sloan and Director Yearwood for your recent election to District Four and Three respectively. 2024 was a mile so near for us, marked by five new park openings, forty-six improvement projects, and countless moments that positively impacted our community. Here we have a little bit about our team, so we're able to provide quality recreational programs, parks, and services to over a hundred and thirty-three thousand residents, thanks to our amazing staff, and we have seventy-five full-time employees and two hundred and twenty part-time employees. Brief district overview, we have eleven community parks, thirty-seven neighborhood parks, four community centers, two community pools, Cordova Golf Course, five water play areas, and an urban park. And then we get to jump into what's new. So very exciting year, you know, park planning was busy, busy, busy. We opened up five new parks in the year. We started with Hummingbird Park, then moved on to Gold Rush, Aura Park, Rock Rose Park, and Exploration Park. And then, as you may recall, at the end of last year, due to the weather, we kind of postponed the ribbon cuttings for Rock Rose Park and Exploration Park. And so we're working with the developers and anticipate that we'll have those events in spring of 2025. Next, we're going to jump into some community news, so these are some of the feel-good stories that we had throughout the year. First up, we have our Green Thumb Garden Program that's at the Ravi Neil Orchard Senior Activities Center. And the picture that you see there is actually from the Spring Day of Service that was earlier in 2024, where community members actually came out to the garden and helped redo the planters and then plant all the new produce that would be used for the Green Thumb lunches. Following that, out at Sonoma Park, CRPD worked with residents to plant three trees to honor Eugene McCann's legacy and his connection to the community, and he was a frequent visitor to Sonoma Park. Lastly, out at Veterans Park, Boy Scout Gregory unveiled his Eagle Scout project, which was a three sign memorial honoring the Tuskegee Airmen. So if you haven't gone out there to see it yet, I highly encourage you to go out and see it, it's a great tribute to them. And then as Andrea so kindly introduced this topic, giving back to our community is something that we all really value here at CRPD. In the summer, board members and staff donated over seven hundred school supply items for Folsom Cordova Unified School District, and then recently, as mentioned, over fourteen hundred dollars in Target and Dollar Tree gift cards. And then later on in the year, our CRPD staff from admin, park services, recreation, and the Cordova Golf Course also took time out of their day to volunteer with the Rancho Cordova Food Locker. And the Food Locker serves over four thousand community members every month. It's a really great organization, so we're happy to go out there and volunteer our time with them. All right, community members served in 2024. So we served an estimated five hundred thousand community members this year, or this past year, I should say. We offered over sixteen hundred programs, there were sixty-two events held in our parks, and then out at the Cordova Golf Course, there were over eighteen thousand driving range buckets sold and close to forty thousand green fees. And last but not least, there was almost six thousand dollars provided by the Cordova Recreation and Parks Foundation to go towards the scholarship program for that fiscal year. Now we get to jump into Matt's favorite topic, the financial snapshot. So this year, we increased seventeen point eight actions due to the five new parks that we brought online, which goes to demonstrating our commitment to growing those outdoor community spaces. We increased our general fund reserves by almost eight hundred and sixteen thousand, which supports our long-term financial health and sustainability. And then we delivered on forty-six infrastructure and community-focused projects, enhancing parks and facilities. And then, as you can see in the lower half of the page, we highlighted some key projects that were completed in each election district. Here we have some more financial metrics. I'll do a little brief highlight here. So our twenty-five million dollar budget is allocated across labor, services, supplies, debt, and projects. And then we strategically use Measure J, My Parks Enhancement Funds, to support operations and prioritize critical infrastructure projects that directly benefit our community. And then of the two point eight percent of the one percent in tax funds we receive, we really make sure that every dollar makes an impact. So our Dollars Make Sense graphic illustrates how we allocate those funds, and you can see that the majority is focused on parks and recreation. Now on to getting social, which is my favorite part. We have, we saw a huge growth in our audience engagement and reach across our social media this year, really unprecedented numbers. So we have fifty-two percent increase in net followers, three hundred and ten percent increase in reactions, three hundred and sixty-seven percent increase in total posts, and close to a million impressions, which is pretty impressive, if I do say so myself. And when we talk about reactions versus impressions, because those can tend to be arbitrary topics, right? When we talk about a reaction, those are your likes, your shares, your comments, and then an impression is every time someone sees a piece of content, that's counted as one impression. Fun fact. And now we're at the end. So this brochure is going to be available online, we're going to do a social push, and then we're also going to have some hard copies available at all of our community centers. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Shelby, you hit a home run with this, this report. Did you do the graphics? Because it's just beautiful.
Our communications and marketing analyst, Elena Berger?
Nice, very, very nice.
Took all of our facts and information and really made it connectable with the community.
Very well put together. I'm very, very, very pleased with that. Board members? Brian?
No, it looks very good, Shelby. Staff, like always, thank you very much for everything you guys do. It just proves it here that, once again, you guys are doing what needs to be done for the community.
Director Yearwood?
I don't have any questions, echo what you guys said, it's, looks fantastic, great job everybody. Can't wait to see what 2025's looks like. All right.
Secretary?
No, it looks, looks, looks really good, very professional, very nice, so it'd be nice for the community to see, to know, that's good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Nice cheer, that's okay. Go on, go on.
Yeah, thank you, very, very awesome just to see all the improvements, all the new parks that opened, and have those pictures in there, and it's done very, very well, so just great job, and thank you.
So is this online? Can people go and click on it?
It'll be online tomorrow morning.
And if they just open it up, that's called an impression, or just view it?
So the impressions really relate to our social media content. So for example, when we do our social push about our Year in Review, anytime someone sees that, that's going to be counted as one impression. So if I see it, it's one, if Patrick sees it, it's one.
That's great, almost amazing. So I love having the hard copy too, I mean, I know it's a little work, but it's nice to have it, be able to take home and file it away and look at it and share it with people. Put it on my coffee table. Thank you very much for this report.
Thank you.
I almost promised ukulele, but I thought that'd be too much.
No walk-off music?
But that brings us, what is it, ukulele? Let's bring that. That brings us to D two, presentation by staff.
So this is the poem version of the Year in Review. I'm still.
So item D two is the presentation by staff on S and P Global Rating, and CFO Mac Adell, take it away.
All right, so we have a very super proud moment to announce, and I'll just let Jill show it now. All right, well, I don't know, maybe I'll lead up to it, so. So we're recognized by a very reputable financial agency, S and P Global. We had an update done, and they decided to increase our rating from A minus to a higher grade. And you'd think it would be A, because I'd be the next step up, but instead, they took us to A plus.
Nice panel.
Incredible, yeah. So I asked, out of curiosity, I said, how often does that happen? And they responded, rarely, that rarely happens. I mean, sometimes you stay status quo, sometimes you go down, but to go up two spots is incredible. And so why? Why did we go up two spots? After the review, our audits, our financial statements, our culture, our economy, not only us, but businesses and growth that's happening around us took part in this. Of course, how we manage the operations, our projects, our debt, our reserves, and our policies, and so here we are, gifted with this big check. And it's who we are and how we're seen in the financial world, so this is incredible news, so.
Awesome.
Can you get a picture of everybody? I would love to get a picture of all the board members. Move over, move over this way, we're going to center our size.
Center our crew.
All right, all right. Tell us when we're good. Maybe we could have tape on before.
Okay, this should be done. One, two, three.
Beautiful. Beautiful.
Oh, this way?
Lay down?
Move over this way, we're going to center our size.
We use this way.
All right, all right. Tell us when we're good. Maybe we could have tape on before.
Okay, this should be done. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Awesome.
Where do you go from there, Matt?
We're actually a higher grade.
Yeah, double A, triple A. There's only two companies that have triple A, so.
Major. I have triple A. Do you want to kind of talk about that a little bit more?
All right, check, check, check.
Double A plus, plus.
So yeah, so the next step would be double A, minus, and double A, double A plus, and then triple A, which is just really tough to get. I can't remember what the two companies, do you remember the two companies that have triple A?
They're like super corporate, like Ford and something else was, it's pretty much a corporate reservation, not necessarily community designation from what we were understanding. As a public agency, that's a very, very high score. But also, just on top of it all, it took a lot for us to fill out the application, we were interviewed, and I'm just super proud of the way we're moving this agency forward, and it was recognized. The culture was something that they talked about in terms of our longevity as staff. We've all been here for quite some time now, and that does matter in a financial world for consistency, and so I could not be more proud. So Matt, thank you for leading that. It's been awesome for us to see where we were and where we're going. And so, yeah, maybe next year we'll go with a triple. It's actually positioning us very well for if we, you know, go through, and if it pulls well, a potential bond for the future, we're positioned better than we were, obviously, if they eat minus ratings, so I'm thrilled.
And we were upfront and honest with them about that too, because they asked us, not only did they dive into our past and our audits and everything, they talked about what we're currently doing, and then what our future plans are for liability and debt and reserves and things like that. And we were honest, we said, you know, we just did the optimized plan, we showed that to them as well, and said that we might incur future debt to tackle these challenges, and so, you know, I thought, ooh, that might, that might hurt our grade chances, but I think that honesty and transparency actually boosted it, so, very happy.
I'm just curious, other agencies?
You know, Rick, I asked that question too, because I want to see where we compare with others, and they did not have that data. I thought they were going to say, well, you have to sign up or pay a fee or whatever to get that information, but I am curious to see what others have, especially park districts.
Right, I'm curious too.
So I'll do more research and see if I can come up with that.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, CRPD, thank you very much. So that brings us to, let's see, where are we? To present, committee reports, we have none, hearings, we've got no hearings, and that takes us to our regular calendar. G one.
All right, item G one, discuss, take action on the response to the Board of Directors' requests regarding offering public swim sessions at the Rosemont High School Pool for the summer of 2025, and I'll turn it over to Director of Parks and Recreation, Jen Mance.
Good evening, again, how are you? Just kidding. All right, so recommendation tonight. So we've got a staff recommendation that the Board of Directors discuss and take action on the response to the Board of Directors' requests regarding offering public swim sessions at the Rosemont High School Pool for the summer of 2025, which is this summer. So a little bit of the background, again, on December eighteenth, 2024, Director Langen requested that district staff research and analyze the potential to reserve and offer public swim lessons at Rosemont High School Pool for this summer. Cordova, CRPD, has not facilitated operations at the Rosemont High School Pool since the end of 2021, and that's when our Cordova Community Pool opened, was that summer, that next summer. So at that time, the Blue Marlins and the Cordettes were the two swim teams that were utilizing the Rosemont High School Pool due to the closure of the Cordova Community Pool. So a little bit of analysis, so staff work with the CRPD aquatics team to identify potential options and outlined operations for use of the Rosemont High School Pool this summer. Staff identified three options, really four options, the fourth option being that we don't do anything, but the three options, which include potential dates, operating days and times, projected revenue, expenses, and a projected subsidy. In discussion, it was determined that the aquatics team would need to hire additional staff to support the identified scenarios. Factored into this consideration was the departure of college student staff, which is usually at the end of July, is when those college students go back to college, and that is the bulk of our staff, which again, makes up a significant portion of the summer aquatic staff. The annual, the annual operations of the Cordova Community Pool, the Lincoln Village Community Pool, and the White Rock Community Splash Park also all require a significant level of certified staff. Furthermore, it was determined that offering public swim lessons at Rosemont High School Pool should not impact standard programming and staffing levels at other CRPD aquatic facilities. And again, that is the reason, and that's the reason why is because it's public swim, which takes less personnel than if we were going to do lessons and other program types at Rosemont High School. So if you turn the page over, we've got the fiscal impact, and as you can see, we laid out the three options of the fiscal impact. So we have the three scenarios, we have a three-day scenario, a two-day scenario, and then a once-per-month, which is our themed family swim nights. So option one would be a total of twenty-four days, one in May, some in June, some in July, again, ending in July due to the fact that staff tends to go back to school at that time. Operating days for option one would be Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. The entrance fee, which is similar to the Lincoln Village Community Pool, would be three dollars per person. We project that revenue to be a little over three thousand dollars, and then you can see the expense. And then you can see the expenses are listed there as well. We have our CRPD staff. We've got the application fee for Sac City Unified School District, their custodial fee, their pool rental fee, and their locker room fee. So the estimated expenses are just about $51,000. So a projected subsidy for option number one would be $47,804. Option two is a 15 total days. That would be offering Fridays and Saturdays, again, still $3 per person. Projected revenue, just about $2,000. You've got all the staffing costs, so they're the same in regards to, you know, where they come from, from staffing, application fees, so forth and so on. Projected subsidy there is $31,215. And then option three would be that once per month, which is again themed a family swim night. We'd have one in June, one in July, and one in August. Friday nights from three to seven, we do a dollar per person. Again, that's the same fee that we charge any other family swim nights at both Cordova Community Pool as well as the Lincoln Village Community Pool. Projected revenue is about $97. And then you've got the estimated expenses. And so the total subsidy would be $6,257. Now, we have to let you know that these rates that we came up with for the expenses are based on right now 2025 spring. We don't know what the summer rates are going to be, and neither does the school district at this point. The school district, basically, it's a four months in advance that you can go ahead and schedule or try to reserve the pool, but they don't have their summer rates out yet. So they won't have those for a couple more months. And then the big disclaimer is these are all proposed dates. They are not guaranteed. These are dates that we chose for those Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, or Friday, Saturday, or for those, that one Fridays, for the once per month. But until we're able to get into the system and reserve those, we don't know if these are going to be the exact dates that we get. So we just want to be upfront and transparent about that. So basically for tonight, you've got four options that you can discuss. You have option number one, which is offer that three day schedule pending availability for public swim sessions at the Rosemont High School Pool, beginning May 31st through July 27th. Identified days and times are Fridays, three to seven, Saturdays, one to five, and Sundays, one to 5:00 PM. You have option two, offer the two day schedule pending availability for public swim lessons beginning at Rosemont High School Pool, beginning May 31st through July 26th. Identified days and times are Fridays from three to 7:00 PM and Saturdays from one to 5:00 PM. Option three, offer a themed family swim night at the Rosemont High School Pool, once per month for June through August, pending availability. And then option four is do not move forward with offering public swim lessons at Rosemont High School's Pool for the summer of 2025. Continue to offer aquatic programming at Cordova Community Pool, the Lincoln Village Community Pool, and the White Rock Community Splash Park as scheduled in the spring/summer 2025 recreation guide. And so that concludes my report. Be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Appreciate that report. I have some questions before I throw it out to the rest of the posse here. It just says our CRPD staffing, it says custodial fee, and it has a big number next to both of those. What does that include? How many people are going to be staffed at this pool during the four hours that they're there?
Yeah, it's a great question. So we basically, no matter what the scenario is, whether it's a three day, two day, or just the three days total. You have a pool manager. So every time we have to have a pool manager on staff. You have to have lifeguards. That's at least five people.
Five?
Oh, yeah. For that size of a pool, it's at least five people. And plus, we have to rotate as well. And then you have cashier or an assistant pool manager. So sometimes they can, in the beginning or, you know, during the session, they could be both the cashier and the assistant pool manager.
So if we have only 15 people who show up, you're going to have five lifeguards?
It's the size of the pool. So it has nothing to do with the capacity. It's the size of the pool. So if there's five people in the pool or there's 100 people in the pool, it's the same capacity level for the lifeguards as well as the pool staff.
And the management is a little bit higher of a pay grade than the step. Are the, the lifeguard's like $20 an hour?
The lifeguards, I mean, average lifeguard is about $17 per hour. And so you got to think too, right? So even if, they have to get there an hour early, and then they're there usually an hour after. So you're taking that timeframe of three to seven, but they need to be there from two to probably 7:30 or eight as well. So we can't, we can't just show up at three and open the doors. There's prep work. There's training ahead of time. There's lots of things that need to happen before and after the pool is open.
And the next question I have was age. What would you allow since it doesn't have a zero entry?
You know, yeah. So with no zero entry, this is considered a competition pool. It's unlike our Cordova Community Pool and our Lincoln Village Community Pool. So there's really no easy entry into the pool. It's a competition pool. You know, we would talk about it with staff. It would just be the swimming ability level. It doesn't mean that someone, you know, a parent can't bring their, their young child and get in the water and have, you know, fun in the water. It just, it's really going to be up to that, up to that guardian or that parent to decide that. But we'll have a deeper discussion with the staff to see if they want to put an age restriction on that. It's a great question.
So they'll be able to wear water wings and stuff like that, or if they need to?
We'll, we'll discuss it with the aquatics.
Okay. Next thing was the custodial fee. I don't understand what that.
Yep. So that's what the school district charges. So those fees that you see there, from the application fee, the custodial fee, the pool rental fee, and the locker room fee, those are all the fees that the Sacramento City Unified School District will charge us to be at Rosemont High School. And they're, those are their fees.
And they're not negotiable. That's, that is it?
They are not.
And right now, are they using, utilizing the pool?
They use it for their swim team.
No, I mean during the summer, when they're out.
We, I, we don't know if they do or not. It's, it's, we don't think that they do use it for the summer, but we don't know if somebody else is going to rent it in the summer. But them as a swim team, they use it up to, close to, I'd say probably May, just like the Cordova High School uses our pool, depending on how good they do in competition. Cordova High School is usually in our pool till the beginning of May.
And has anybody approached the school district, the school board superintendent, to maybe work out some type of a program deal with the Rosemont?
We've been in contact with the principal of Rosemont High School. But just like our pool, because these are fixed costs, these are costs, like this is a direct cost that it costs them, the Rosemont High School or the Sac City Unified, to operate this pool. There's really, it's hard to make any kind of deals with them. We'll continue to have open communication with Sac City Unified School District in Rosemont, but at this time, there are no deals to be made.
So if we don't use the locker room, then we can, that's where the bathrooms are?
You have to use the locker.
Not an option.
You have to use the locker room. And the custodian is, you have to pay for four hours no matter what. So we're paying for the four, even if we were there an hour or two hours, you're paying for the four hours of the custodial. So in essence, we're paying that four hours and then an additional hour because we're going to be there for at least five hours.
Well, I'm going to open this up to my directors now because I think they, they're probably chomping at the bit to get some input here. Director Danzel?
Thank you, staff, for doing the work. I know Secretary, or at the time Secretary Lang, but Vice Chair Langen asked for this. And thank you, staff, for, for doing that and going through and following that out. I have a couple of questions. So the number in red is, you know, the number that has to be paid by somewhere. So my question to Mr. Caddell is, do we have this money sitting around?
It would have to be in a budget amendment, probably to, out of our reserves. And so the two funds I feel most comfortable coming from is either PMRID or General Fund to pay for that.
And we don't have any restrictions on?
No, it could be done. It's just going to take away from the reserves, which has many purposes attached to it. But this could be one. This is an option.
Would it be a more comfortable number than say, I'm looking at option two, it's 15 days? If we were to go like 10 days, get it down to a certain figure, would that be more?
No, whatever, I mean, whatever we determine the benefits to the community is probably key. And then after that, whatever it costs, it costs. I mean, we can manage that. But again, you know, reserves is for specific things. And this was not on the radar, but you know, it can be if we all decide such.
Director, you would?
Are you all done? No, actually. Oh, you're all done? Yeah, I still, I do, do believe and I agree with Vice Chair Langen. This is something that, you know, needs to be done for that part of the community. I just, I, not knowing what it's going to bring, it's a different type pool than we're used to. And it's unfortunately late in the game, you know, for me. I'm stuck between option three and four right now. So that's where I sit. And I just want to put that out there publicly so everybody knows. It depends on what the rest of this discussion, where I fall on this. But just want to let my fellow board members know that's where I sit currently. Oh, was it my turn?
Director, you would.
All right. So I guess, since Vice Chair Langen brought this up, what was the catalyst for this? Were you approached? Was this a discussion somewhere?
Yeah, I've had a few people discuss it with me and then it was brought up in the Rosemont Community Association meeting.
Okay. And this, doing a little bit of math, thank goodness for the calculator on my phone. So it looks like we're kind of projecting an average of 42 people a night, according to these numbers. Where did we come up with that number?
We took the average from the Lincoln Village Community Pool. And that's how we came up with the anticipated projected revenue.
Okay. So are we concerned that if we do go with this, we'll end up operating multiple aquatic centers and all we'll do is siphon people off of, say, Lincoln Village or another one to go to this one? Are these folks that had been bringing it up just haven't been going anywhere because there's nothing close to them? I guess it's back to Vice Chair. Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I don't have an answer for it.
Okay. Wish I could read my own handwriting. So, so I guess, so if you propose these dates to the school district and they say, oh, yep, you can have this day, this day, this day, you can have this one, this one, this one. So say we did the three day schedule of 24 total days. And if they say you can't have these days, so we just do, say they say you can't have four days. We do 20, or do we propose alternate days? Or do we stick with these, you know, basically?
I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, expenses aren't going to change. I mean, they're only going to change with the dates, right? So it's not, if we have fewer dates, I mean, there's still going to be the subsidy that's attached to it. So it's, it's the staffing that's going to be difficult. The, the, you know, if we had the, if you guys, as a board, you know, decided on option one, we're going to hire staff for those 24 days. So if it's less days, yeah, it might hurt staffing a little bit because we might not get staffing that might commit to just the 24 days or less than 24 days. But overall, the numbers would probably, you know, pan out to be the same in, in where you have the set, you know, fixed expenses and then the revenues. And so there's still going to be, you know, a subsidy no matter what.
Let's, I have a few more. Sorry about that. I guess the question is, I would, I would not lean towards option one, that's for sure, without knowing. I guess, have we considered doing a survey out to that area to see what their interest is in something like this? I mean, I would hate to do all of this to find out we have five people show up and we have seven staff members there for them. It doesn't seem like a wise use of our money. Have we ever considered a survey to, to that part of the district to see if that's something there's a real high demand for?
Sure. I think that depending on the board's decision this evening, if the board decides, you know, not to run operations this summer, then us as staff, yes, we would reach out to that community. We would do surveys. We would work with the Rosemont Community Association, the schools, to see what really the interest is. As you know, Rosemont was open in the past and it was open for public swim and swim lessons. And according to past employees, that part of the operation shut down because it wasn't as popular as they thought it was going to be. And so that it ended up being just the swim teams utilizing the Rosemont High School Pool.
I seem to remember that.
But that's, you know, years ago. So things could have changed from, from years ago. So yes, if, if that's the direction of the board, of course, we would go out to the community and see what they're interested in and see if Rosemont is a pool that they would want to swim in in the summer and what that might look like. We would absolutely be happy to do that.
And just one last question. I think, I think you said that, is the school district not receptive to like MOUs, where there's set things and?
So it's not that they're not receptive to an MOU. It's just that, it's, it's, it's a set cost. It's just like our pool. The, the, the cost to operate the pool doesn't change. I mean, we have chemicals that we need to put in there. We need to heat the pool. You need to have the staffing and so forth. So we, we will reach out to them and have a great conversation. It's our plan to revisit our joint use agreement with Sacramento City Unified School District, which is, you know, you know, pretty old. But doing research on joint use agreements, we typically, aquatic centers are not included in joint use agreements just because again, it's the sheer cost to operate this facility. It's just, it's, it's expensive.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for reminding. Yeah, we did have offered that before there. We did, I'd forgotten that we ended up not doing it because there was just no participation.
Right.
So I might tend to agree with Director Danzel. Maybe option three would be where I would lean towards. Thank you.
Secretary Metis.
Yeah, let me finish my last note here. So looking at it on Google Maps there, so there's really, there's no shade. There's no nothing around the pool.
There's not.
So, and then are people going to be allowed to bring in their own food? Or is there, would there be like a snack bar?
There's no snack bar, so I'd assume that they will allow food. But we would have to look at the rules. It's been a while since we've taken a look at those.
And then would people allowed to bring in their own chairs and shade and everything else, towels?
I would assume so, but again, it would be something that we would need to look at.
Okay. And then, you know, as far as like the funding, like, you know, obviously they're, they're shouldering their fee that they're paying for the equipment, for the pool, for everything else. And either we rent it, they still have to pay no matter what to maintain that pool that day, no matter what. So I was just wondering if that would be a great way to, you know, do two by two, especially with Sacramento City School District, to start up that relationship again in this coming year, to talk to them about that. You know, I mean, it's just, it would be nice for the community, but at the same time for us to use it. I don't see why we would have to shoulder that cost for the day, even though if nobody's using it, they're still paying for it. It'd be nice to get a little bit of a break on that. And then have we thought about sponsorships, like with partnerships with Metro, Fire, or Sheriffs? Because I know they have, they have children's leagues and everything else. And so maybe one night could be a, you know, Fire Night. They can do something in the pool with the kids, and the same things with the sheriffs.
That's a great idea.
Or other areas too. So that would be another way to hopefully maybe cover some of those costs.
Sure.
Vice Chair Lang.
Yeah. So thank you, staff, for putting this together. And I appreciate the hard work that it took and calling and getting all this and then putting it together. So thank you very much for that. I don't really have any questions. I think looking at it, in my personal opinion of doing what's best for CRPD, but also doing what's best for the community, I think option one doesn't make any sense. It's just the, the subsidy amount is in my, in my mind, too high. Which brings down to the, to the last three options. But I did notice within option two that, and I know, these were just, let me ask this question. These were just dates that were just thrown out there, like as in on this paper? Or are these actual dates that we would try to go after?
These are dates that we would go after. So the, so for option two, the dates that you see are the Fridays and Saturdays amongst those months.
Because to the best of my knowledge, they're still in school for some of them, and that's.
Right. So that's another great question. So you'll notice like with the Fridays, we don't even start Fridays till the middle of June because we have to wait for them to be out of school to be able to do that. But the Saturdays would be open until, even when they're in school, the Saturdays would be open.
What's May 31st? Is it Saturday?
I have another question.
What's your question?
Yeah, I forgot to ask this one. Is there also extra cost? Is there also extra costs involved on, say, like the July 4th day? So there would be?
It's a holiday, yep, they will, they will pay, we will pay a holiday fee for that, that day if we open on July. If they're, if they even give it to us, then we would have to pay overtime. And so there is a different fee for that one day.
That's for the custodial and also our staff too?
It's, I think it's just for, um, the custodial. It's actually not for our staff. Because they're, yeah, unless we have a full-time person, uh, working, but, um, are seasonal and part-time. They, yeah, they don't get the extra pay for the holiday.
Back to you.
Yeah. Yeah, so to me, I, I definitely, um, from the other, uh, members of the board, directors, uh, I, I definitely feel that same sentiment of, well, if we try it and it doesn't work, what are we doing? And so to me, um, if we go along with, with trying this out, I think option three, just to throw it out, would, would be the best option.
I'm going to agree with that also. I don't, but, but I don't like about option three is it's only three days. It's a tough thing to, to get advertised out there. And on a Friday, a lot of the parents are still working. The kids might be off, but parents work. So in order to get more people out there, I think you're better off having it on a Saturday. So therefore, I don't know that it's possible to look at a Friday, Saturday opening. So we have it six days in those, one in each month, two days in each month, rather than just one day. Because you could just, just not have anybody that one day because they didn't know about it, you know? And then all of a sudden they go, oh, it's tomorrow too. Oh, great.
Is there overtime on Saturday too?
And I wouldn't, I really wouldn't shoot for the holidays at all. I would cross July 4th off. I don't know what the fifth falls on, but I just think that the hard part about this task is to, to educate the community there that we have this facility. The art, right, of the Rosemont Community Association has their membership. But it's, you know, and they have a lot of connection with the schools that are in there, elementary schools, which would be a good avenue to get flyers out or some type of a notice that way to beef up that, the, the, the thing. But I did like what Director Mattis said, you know, maybe that, on that, say we do it a Friday, Saturday, one of those days we, we could have Sacramento Athletic, uh, Association, Sal or whatever they call it. Or, or maybe the county would step up and, and have this kind of like county day and, and just have some booths out there and have the pool open and the community can come and, um, enjoy the, the pool. But not just, it would just, when you just have three days, it's really limited. It's like, I don't know if it's really going to show whether it's going to work or not. So my, my opinion would do, do a little change on that one, on the, on the option three.
And to piggyback off that, I think our guide already went out, correct?
It did, so the guide is in the mail right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's rough, yeah.
The guide would have been a good, see, we missed that avenue too. So we're going to have, you know, Shelby's going to have to, you know, do a blitz of, of social media. We're going to have to get, if we get the organizations on, on board, I think it'll be a whole different thing because you're going to have more of a community, uh, show up. Because, you know, the counties got out there and they're, you know, they have some booths and some information stuff that you can also learn and on different safety aquatic stuff that would be kind of cooler. Those are, those are my thoughts. I mean, and the $1 person, I think that's good. At least gives you the, you know, how many people are, are, you know, there. You charge, even if they don't swim, it's, it's a dollar to get in, right?
It is, anyone who walks through the door would, it would be a dollar.
Shade thing's a, a big thing. They will, they, someone will need to have umbrellas or something out there. I don't know if that's possible for the district to do, but we need some shade out there. Otherwise, we're just burning these kids up. But, um, you want to go back down again, guys, or what are we going to?
Can I ask one more question? What's the likelihood of, obviously there's some, I, I believe there were some very good things, some, some ideas brought up. And so what's the likelihood of us revisiting it next month? Or is that too late?
No, it's not too late. I mean, we, we've missed the recreation guide. And so, you know, if, let's just say you decide, um, tonight, um, that you want to, you know, think about it more and come back next month. Of course, we can do that because we can't reserve this until four months in advance anyhow. So say you decide on option three, we won't even know that if June 20th is available until four months ahead of time. So that's why those dates are pretty fluid at this point. I think that, um, you know, in our experience, in our aquatics experience, um, Saturdays are not a typical open swim day. It's not popular, which is pretty interesting. So that's why we do our themed family swim nights on Friday nights because they seem to be, um, you know, the better day to do those. We can also, um, and it, yes, Shelby will have a huge part in advertising. So whatever we decide to do, right, we will reach out to the Rosemont Community Association. We'll reach out to the schools. We will do as much advertising as we possibly can, um, to try to get people. If, if we decide on option four tonight, if you decide on option four tonight, then what we can do is regroup as, as, you know, a staff and figure out maybe what next summer looks like. And maybe that's our opportunity to go back out to the community and ask some of the great questions that you've asked this evening. You know, about working with the school district to see if we can lower that fee. Maybe working with other community associations or organizations to do themed nights so that we get more people there because there's more to do than just swimming. So there's a lot of different options, but we're like, we're, we, our, our foot is already on the pedal for this summer. I mean, we started that, you know, back in November. So, uh, you know, Nicole and her staff are already, have already started trainings, um, for both the, you know, for both the Cordova Community Pool as well as White Rock and, and Lincoln Village. Not saying that this couldn't work for us this summer, but if we did have an option to, you know, to wait till next summer, we could obviously do a little bit more work in figuring out what might be the best case scenario to get the maximum use out of the Rosemont High School. But again, it's, it's you as a board that makes that decision. And however you guide us, of course, we're going to take it and run with it and make the best of it and, and get it out there to the, to the community.
So if we go with option four, it's not killing it? It would just go back and rethink it for 2026?
If it's the board's desire to try to get into Rosemont High School in the future, we will do everything we possibly can to make that happen.
Okay.
I have a hard time with making that decision because you're, you're just not utilizing this year at all.
Yeah.
And I think we need to test the waters on this thing ASAP in order to get it really to, I mean, every new event, it's, it doesn't just boom, success. Unless it's like during the pandemic and, you know, we've opening the pool for, you know, but that's not going to happen either, right? We didn't open our pools. But, uh, you know, the parks were open.
I would like to at least amend like option three for that one there is adding, um, an effort for the partnerships with, you know, like, like I was saying, like would suggest, like with Metro and Sheriff, uh, other organizations to kind of put this together. Because if we approve this now, that gives us time, but you guys won't know and you can't do anything until March to apply?
Yeah.
Yes, it'd be March.
No, it's February for the June. So February, March, April, May. So, yeah, we'll know in February 1st if we get the June, J date.
Oh, you have to, oh, my goodness.
So each date, it's four months, so we can't, yeah.
And we wouldn't even?
So we won't know about August until April.
And we, we?
So really a decision really kind of does need to be made to secure the June dates tonight? Otherwise, we're pushing it down and we won't be, uh, confident, uh, hopeful, but not confident that it would be available when we go to reserve it.
And we will, um, we will meet with the, um, uh, the school principal as well and have a really great discussion. If, if tonight the decision is option three, then we will get that meeting set up sooner than later to see if maybe the school principal will sort of bypass the system and lock in some dates for us for those, yeah.
Just, I don't, Secretary Mattis, I don't, she, we already have it as themed family swim nights. I don't know if we'd have to do an amendment to partner with other folks. Wouldn't that kind of fall under the whole theme?
Yeah, we, we'll work on that, yeah.
We can add to it as like a community service night kind of deal. So, yeah, it's just a theme kind of thing.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
And then the, uh, what else was there? Is the, on that, the option three? And then, oh, yeah, so e- yeah, even though the guide went out, but that still gives us plenty of time to do blast on social media, to promote that event and everything else. At least that gives you three days to promote. That gives us a great opportunity to gauge the community. And that way it gives you more, a, a better picture for next year to look at it. And that gives us a little bit more, uh, leverage, I would say, with the district hopefully to, to work out a better partnership on that for the cost.
And staffing wise, it works better as well because we don't have to, um, actually hire any additional staff. We'll just pull that staff from Cordova or Lincoln Village.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jill, can you, um, explain a little bit more about that four-month deal so that we can have a clear understanding that we're able to reserve the June dates in February? Do we have to wait for March to do the July? So we're really not able to secure the three dates in February at this time?
Correct. Yep, so February's June, March is going to be July, yep.
But you could at least like advertise it like March, you know, first of, you know?
It's coming, yeah.
Yeah, TBD.
But again, I mean, hopefully to, um,
But that gives us more flexibility, like if that date that we have here, it could be, oh, it could be the next Saturday, the next Friday.
And again, if the board decides on option three, um, perhaps we could get with the principal and say, hey, our board?
Yeah, can we do that?
Yeah, is looking to, to test the waters, no pun intended, right? And, uh, see, uh, what we can do, um, to maybe secure those dates ahead of time. It's, the facility reservation system isn't through the high school. It's actually through the school district. Because we deal with that at Cordova High School as well. It's not necessarily up to the principal. There's a facility system that we go in, um, to like just reserve the parking lot even for, for that. So we'll of course try our best, um, to see if we can secure the three dates if option three is the desire of the board.
Do you have to reserve the parking lot?
Uh, we do at Cordova High School when we're having huge events. At Rosemont, we will not need to, yeah. It's a great question, though.
All right then.
I don't, uh, I mean, that $6,000, I think that'll be a piece of cake to find someone to subsidize that. I mean, I'm already got some ideas. That's why I wanted to know if we could, if we could double that, 12,000.
The Sloan family night?
It's not very much either. 31 was a lot.
I mean, there's always an option, say, if we do find a partner that comes in and where we can actually add another night, we could?
Double it?
We can bring that to the board to request to add a day? Or could you guys just do that on your own? So we don't have to wait three weeks for an approval to make a reservation and then we lose out on that?
Right. I, I think if we got a sponsor, um, I, I think we could figure out how to, how to add some, yeah, add a date or two, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. Now, I'd have to check with aquatic staff. It's going to come down to staffing, but I think?
But you wouldn't have to wait for us to approve it?
Correct.
Okay.
So does someone want to make a motion here?
Chair Sloan, I'll make the motion.
All right.
I move the Board of Directors' direct staff to program and offer a themed family swim night at the Rosemont High School Pool once per month for June through August 2025, pending availability.
Second?
I have a motion by Director Yearwood, a second by Vice Chair Lengen. Do we, uh, roll call vote?
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lengen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Joe.
I think that's good news for Rosemont. I think they'll be happy, it's a start. And, you know, when they did their Easter recon, nobody was, the first time they opened it, it sold out. You know, they had 300 people there. They could fill that pool. Uh-oh, 300 people, what happens to them? Okay, where are we?
Capacity of the pool, by the way, it's 250.
250? Well, it's a lot.
Yeah, 250 for the capacity.
Above water and also underwater?
The whole entire, it's capacity of the space is 250.
250, okay.
And now, okay, that brings us to G2 then.
Item G2, reschedule the May 21st, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Directors. Due to the annual CARPD conference, staff is recommending that the Board of Directors reschedule the date of the May 21st, 2025 regular board meeting. There are two meeting date options listed in the staff report for your consideration. And staff is recommending the May 28th date.
May 28th.
The week after, Wednesday after.
Do we go for discussion or we just take a vote?
Um, we would need a motion, a second, and then we do a roll call vote.
Let's do that. Will anyone make that motion on 28th?
I move the Board of Directors' reschedule the May 21st, 2025 regular board meeting to May 28th, 2025.
Second?
I have a motion by Director Lengen and a second by, who was that? Director Danzel. Roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Can't do it?
I may not be, I may not be in town that day. I just realized that. Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Yeah, aye, for me, I may, may have to take the remote option for that one.
Vice Chair Lengen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
What typically comes up in May?
CARPD conference?
No, no, for, for, for board.
Graduate?
For general board meetings.
Uh, is, do we do, um, preliminary mat in May or June? June, yeah. Okay. So it's, it's, it has been for the last few years a light because of the conference. We've, it's typically been a light month.
Okay.
So.
Well, then it comes up as school graduations and stuff like that during the end of the month.
Yeah.
And I, I think Vice, Vice Chair Lengen and Director Mattis, our Secretary Mattis's kids are still a little young for that graduation week, so I think we're okay for?
Oh, I'm thinking?
A little bit, just a little bit.
My, my schedule, I, I was thinking we were in June, so, yeah, I, I, I should be fine for that one.
Well, then that brings us to item H, Board of Directors' items.
Item H1A, nominate directors to board standing committees for the 2025 term. Traditionally, committee appointments occur in the first regular meeting following the election of board officers. The standing committee is a permanent, ongoing subcommittee established to address specific issues regularly and must conform to the Brown Act. The standing committees the board may choose to activate are the Budget and Finance Standing Committee and the District Policies Standing Committee. There's no direct fiscal impact associated with these appointments and board members are compensated $100 per meeting, attended up to six meetings per month, which includes the standing committee meetings. Chairperson Sloan will make nominations through separate motions and the board would then vote on each motion. Alternates for standing committee meetings may be assigned by the chairperson if the need arises.
So I've got, uh, some for the, I, I want to, I'd like to nominate, um, for the Budget and Finance Standing Committee, 2025, myself and Director Mattis. For the District Policies Standing Committee for 2025.
Before we move on to that one, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Oh, oh, okay.
We have to get a second, don't you?
No, he just points.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
I'm confused because then the thing is it says call for the second to the motion and then a roll call vote.
I'll call for a second.
Okay.
So I'll make the second.
There we go.
So I have a motion by, who was the motion? By Director Danzel and a second by?
No, no, you, you made the motion.
I made the, uh, motion by Director, Vice Chair Sloan. And we have a second by Director Danzel. Call, a roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lengen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Next, I'd like to nominate Director Yearwood and Lengen for the District Policies Standing Committee for the year 2025. Can I get a motion on that?
Second.
Oh, I have a motion, I forgot. Okay, I've got a motion by Director, by Chair Sloan and a second by Danzel. Director Danzel, roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lengen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Next, I'd like to nominate Directors Mattis.
Hold on, we got to separate it out because it's ad hoc.
One moment.
Item H1B, appoint directors to board ad hoc committees for the 2025 term. Uh, an ad hoc committee is a temporary special purpose committee formed to handle a specific task and are exempt from the Brown Act. The ad hoc committees the board may choose to activate- The ad hoc committees the board may choose to activate are PMRID Oversight Committee nominations, park naming, CRPD and City of Rancho Cordova two by two, school district two by two, and the CIP one.
Thank you.
Chairperson Sloan would appoint directors to serve on the ad hocs if desired.
Good. Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to nominate Directors Mattis and Langen for the PMRID Oversight Committee nomination ad hoc Committee 2025. I have a, I have a motion by me, I need a second?
No motion.
No motion, okay.
Direct appointment.
Okay, just, okay.
They're just appointing.
Shouldn't this day I am?
All right, so no votes.
No votes.
Okay, good. For the, next, I'd like to nominate Directors Yearwood and Langen for the Park Naming Ad hoc Committee for the year 2025. Next, I'd like to nominate Danzel and Sloan for the CRPD City of Rancho Cordova, two by two.
I'm sorry, who'd you say for that one?
Which one?
Are we doing this, which one are we doing this?
The city.
City.
Danzel and Sloan. Next, I'd like to nominate Danzel and Sloan for the school two by twos, ad hoc. Then I'd like, my final nomination would be Directors Mattis and Yearwood for the Capital Improvement Park Construction Ad hoc Committee for 2025. Does that bring us to the next one? Yeah, right. I have only one nomination for Lafco, I thought we'd just maybe try just one this this time, what?
I'll announce it real quick. H1C, nominate members of the Board of Directors to serve on the Sacramento Lafco Special District Advisory Committee, SDAC, Office A and/or Office B and adopt Resolution 24 slash 25 dash 22 supporting the nominations.
With that, I move the Board of Directors nominate Director Danzel to serve on the Sacramento Lafco Special District Advisory Committee, SDAC, Office A for a two-year term ending, unpaid term ending December 31st, 2026. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by me and a second by Secretary Mattis, roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
So he'll have to get your resume by the 24th? Is that what you said?
A little work on Friday.
I think we had one meeting last year.
And just to confirm, the motion also included supporting the resolution as well.
How they canceled them all?
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Oh, okay. All right, so that brings us to Board Member Reports.
Item H2, Board Member Reports, there's no training to report, so we can move on to the Community Activities Report.
Okay, well, we'll start off with Director Danzel down there at the end.
Okay, I have a total of four meetings, all CARPD related. December 19th, we had a special meeting to increase the size of our Legislative Committee. Currently, we had five, five members of the Board of Directors of CARPD on the Legislative Committee. We open that up to members of the membership to take four more positions to help the organization get a broader sense of what's, you know, legislative stuff going on because there's constantly different things going on. And it gives us a bigger feel than what's just in that room to help make us a better organization and sit down with legislators on different things. So that was December 19th. January 7th, sat down with the Conference Committee for CARPD. Go over once again, as we just talked about in calendar updates, we've got the CRPD Conference coming up in May in San Diego. Things are moving very swift, smoothly. We're almost finalized our calendar of events, which is great. I talked to the incoming president today about starting to work on the 2026 Conference. Hopefully be able to have that information out at the end of the 2025 Conference. So we have a year to know where we're going, what we're doing, at least to date, maybe not anything planned other than that. January 9th, Legislative Committee. Lots of stuff always going on in the legislative. Right now, CRPD is not going to have a bill for this year, but we are working on many things to set up for the 2026 year. We've got some legislators asking about, that are actually finally involved in wanting to help parks, which is a great thing. We know with everything going on in Southern California right now that that's going to definitely change just because the priority in the state is going to shift to how do we fix LA? And then today, this morning, myself and Chair Sloan attend the CARPD General Business Meeting and just moving forward, once again, talk about conference, talk about our Legislative Committee, where that's going, how that's moving forward and just, you know, the the state of state right now on how we're going to move forward and try and get, you know, the best best things possible. Something I asked the Director of CARPD, Matt, Matt Duarte, the executive director over there, is I've asked him to create or reach out to all our member districts and get the rec guide basically for every district. So it is a resource for every district, member district, so we can see what's going on in Southern California. Why are they doing something we're not doing? Or at the same time, it gives us an opportunity if we want to start a program and every other district around us is already heavily doing it, do we need to cut into that? What can we do different to? So it's just something different that we haven't done before. But I felt that it gives us an opportunity to, you know, pull back the curtain a little bit, see what other agencies are doing, something that could help us because it gives us, us board members, it gives our staff a chance to look at that and then the general manager or staff can turn around and make that phone call, oh, we see your, you know, you've got this huge thing going on, how are you making this happen? You know, where did you find out the finances? And it gives us that little bit of extra that might help us grow. So every little chance to help us, you know, help our community is something that I've always been in for and I want to continue. That is the end of my report.
Thank you, Brian. Director Yearwood?
Thank you, Chair Sloan. I attended the Polar Bear Plunge this last Saturday, January 11th. It was very well attended, I don't know what the actual number was of people who plunged, but I've never seen them have to line up on multiple sides of the pool before to to get a spot. So I don't know if it was just the beautiful weather or, I'm not sure, but it was a well-attended event. Quanis was out there making breakfast, sausage passed the fork test, good job.
Key.
Key, yeah, so.
Sausages pass the fork test.
Yeah.
Not worth it.
So anyways. We'll have to explain that some other time, but that was it, it was a great event, well done.
Secretary Mattis?
I had nothing for the month of this year.
Vice Chair Langen?
Yes, so January 9th, the Rosemont Community Association Meeting. One big announcement that came out of that was that they are moving the meeting to in-person next month at Tonement Lutheran and the multipurpose room at seven o'clock and it's open to the public. So I believe they've been through Zoom since COVID, so pretty exciting to be able to meet people for the first time and just interact and stuff in person. Another thing was multiple compliments just about the Rosemont Community Park, how well it's being kept up. And then obviously the the sports courts out there and how they're just just being used all the time. I was at some Little League events and I heard a couple of people talking and they were like, yeah, I hear them until nine o'clock at night, you know, the paddles for the for the pickleball. And and they were like, oh, I I love it though, so just really cool to just to see it out there. And and I was there at that event, I was there until it was dark and so just to see how busy it still was, was a really cool, cool thing to see. So great job with that. They also said, just they wanted to compliment the staff on how easy they, you guys were to work with during the community celebration and just thanked you for that and just such a well, a good job on that. So and then. I was making sure my notes for the meeting were.
Uh-oh, plunge.
And so the Polar Bear Plunge, January 11th. I will say, being my third year of doing it, that it was, the reason we were lined up around was because there was good weather and it was sunny instead of raining. And so, yeah, just a great event, a great time. It is so awesome to just see so many people out there and just take a great job as well.
Thank you. Plungers? You guys are all plungers. So I have a couple of things in my, my report. And basically Director Danzel said most of it, so that keeps me short, which is rare, right? But I will just say I do have the list of the four committee members that were chosen, I can offer that. One is the General Manager, Mary Otten from Pleasant Valley, I don't know if you know her. Diogud Colby? Colby Diogud, General Manager of Yerupa? And Jeff Nickel from General Manager from McFarland. And Steph Visius from Planning and Construction, North of the River Recreation and Park District. So we have two alternates, Scott Seer, Public Information Officer. So this might open a door for you in the future. And Zachary Freels, Freels, board member, Highland, North Highlands. I also attended the meeting today, the Board of, Board Meeting for the CARPD. And, you know, this is, this was all this, the budget for the state was all made before the fires happened, so at that point, we already were facing a $2 billion deficit for this year to start off with. But what I thought was interesting is that, Brian touched it, when we're on, in Tuesday, March 11th, the CARPD is going to head to the Capitol. You know, it's a field trip. And we visit all our legislatures, we meet, and we meet with them and and talk to them about, you know, certain topics, the Brown Act, their ERAF and all these sort of things. But and then a quarter of our legislature is composed of new members as a result of new district boundaries and open seats, so that that was interesting. So there are new people looking for more information and if we can come right to them, knock on the door and we're, we got some, a good chance to get in their support for a lot of our things that we're, we're looking for. Something else, I'm looking forward to the the CARPD Conference in in San Diego. It's shaping up, I think it's the wave of change or something, right, Brian? And I think it should be a very, very informational. They're really beefing up their sponsorship again this year, it's going to be a lot more time where we're going to spend in the sponsorship room so we can mingle and talk and and find out about the different programs and and products that they, we help our districts with. And with that, I think I'm, I'm finished except for going on to the next item, which is item I.
Item I1, District Wide Monthly Progress Report, January 2025, and I'll hand it over to General Manager Patrick Larkin.
Thank you, Shelby.
Some highlights from the past month. We celebrated the holidays and we had a staff holiday party. And in that, we raised $1,435 in Target gift cards, so amazing. We beat our last year's record of $1,400 in our donation. And so it just keeps growing and growing and the generosity of the staff and the board, I just wanted to thank them. It is going towards a sister kind of, I call, we call them a sister kind of community that we're supporting and I'm just thrilled with our community outreach that we do as staff and board, so thank you for that. I celebrated accomplishments at the Rancho Cordova Food Locker, they had an event last Friday. They secured a new location that they're going to be turning into what they call a food hub, which will offer more of an opportunity for those that are in need of food to actually select the food, more of in a grocery style where they go around and they select the foods that they want instead of being kind of given the donation from what they have available, so that was really cool. I believe they're starting to rehab this building that's out there, it's on Don Juan Road. It's off of Folsom Boulevard, it's in a great location to serve the needs of that community, so we're excited to support them in that. I also plunged, me and Danny, we're the plungers this year. I don't have the exact fundraising amount, but I do know that this was the largest year that we've had. So the report back from the foundation is how how much we've raised will most likely come in the February report. Thank you for your support with that. Again, Matt, congratulations and staff for getting us from an A minus to an A plus. The work that took us to get there has been just incredible and I'm super proud of everyone for continuously being responsible and conservative with our budgeting so that we can make sure we continue to be sustainable as a growing agency, so thank you for that. Some human resources information updates, we had, of course, with the change of the new year, there are new laws and regulations that may require some amendments to policies to be reviewed by the Adopted Policy Committee and Board of Directors during the spring. Typically, in California, we get several that are related to HR and so Andrea is diligently getting trained and up to speed on what those policies that affect us will be for the review of the policy committee. In some projects that we have going on, the White Rock Community Park, the cities and our districts proposed Dart Park Project. It is in the initial conceptual design phase with community input meetings expected to be in the spring of 2025. In Hagan Park, the concrete walkway is completed as well as the asphalt driveway is completed. We fixed some major drainage and potholes out there and thank you, Jim, and all the staff for staying on that. We got it done at the end of December, so weather permitting, thank goodness, we were able to complete that. Let's see. Well, that, I'm going to turn it over to the amazing Jill Nuns, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Well, thank you, GM Larkin. Cordova Golf Course named the second best place to golf in the greater Sacramento area by Sacramento Favorites Magazine, receiving the Silver Best Golf Course Award for 2024, so.
Wow, that's great.
Congratulations. We have a golf course staff member in the audience, Stephanie, who is a huge part of the success out at Cordova as well as Vijay Singh and his team. And Chase has been out there as the golf course manager, as we've just hired a new golf course manager. But but honestly, it takes everybody, including you as a board, who continue to support that golf course. And so we appreciate that and we're just super proud that we keep getting recognized by the golfers as a really great place to play golf, so we hope to continue that into 2025.
Who was the one above us or below us?
The one, Hagan Oaks.
Hagan? We're all county courses?
I'm not sure who.
I think Wildhawk?
Wildhawk.
So we're the only.
South, no, south, Wildhawk is Southgate Parks and Rec, so.
Oh, that is, okay.
Yeah, so Southgate is the other Parks and Rec agency that owns a golf course, so we were second, they were third. Yeah, so super proud of that staff. So congratulations to them and thanks to the board, we have new golf carts as well. So with your approval of the budget last year or for this year's budget, but approval last year, we were able to purchase 50 new carts, they're amazing.
Did you get those already?
We did.
I was going to say, because I I saw them, I was at Coloma and Sunrise and it was about two truckloads a couple of weeks ago.
They came bright and early in the morning.
One day they were going down.
Yeah, and they have the new geo fencing technol- Yeah, and they have the new geofencing technology, which basically means that we can control where a golfer takes that golf cart, so that's going to really save our golf course a lot, right? So people can't drive up on the green, they can't hopefully drive into the lake, or drive in certain areas, or if it's rained and we don't want, we want them to stay on the cart path, then we can program it so that the cart stays on the golf path, and it just saves the turf a little bit more, so thank you for that, our golfers, thank you for that, we really needed this, and so we appreciate everyone's support, finance, thank you for helping out with the lease, and yeah, so yay for new golf carts, and they're gray, and they have a black top, and they look beautiful. So anytime you want to come by and see them, Stephanie will be there, and she can give you a ride.
What do you, what do you do with the old ones?
We, you had to turn them in, so basically.
They're at the bottom of the lake.
So basically.
They're at Hagan Park right now, Hagan Golf Course now, right?
So basically, Easy Go bought out our lease, our lease hadn't been up yet, so Easy Go wanted to, you know, I guess, be our vendor for, for golf carts, and so we got lucky. So they bought out the old lease, we have a new lease with them, so we had to return those carts. Yep, but that was all part of the lease, we just let them load them up in the truck and do their thing.
And then like, is the infrastructure to charge it, is it all the same what you already have, or?
Yeah, we had to, we had to add some additional chargers, because before we only had, what, 35 cars, so now with 50, we just added some, but we extended our cart barn, and we did that on purpose, anticipating that eventually we would get some more golf carts, so yeah, so easy peasy. Yeah, we had to upgrade a little bit of the electrical as well, but overall, it's, you know, golf carts, we need them, and we, on the weekends, especially when it was busy, we were running out of golf carts, and so this will help tremendously. It doesn't mean that we won't still run out of golf carts, but it won't be as often as it was in the past, so, yeah.
Gold status, so we maybe get some more carts then.
Yeah, we just, we just need a bigger barn, you know, cart barn, once we get that, we're golden, but thank you for that, and thank you for everyone who worked on that. I know that it's been, has been received well by the golf community. So Marketing Communications, so throughout December 2024, the Marketing Communications Department completed 19 graphic design requests, developed four publications, and collaborated on nine projects. Staff also maintains the website to provide accurate and current information to the public. And then to further connect and engage with the public, staff maintains several social media platforms in which staff interacts with the community, answers questions, and shares information about positive news and events. These platforms include Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Nextdoor, and LinkedIn. Throughout December 2024, staff posted 75 times during the month with 33,700 impressions, which is engagements and link clicks, like Shelby had described earlier. The post of the month was Breakfast with Santa, which highlighted photos from CRPD's holiday event. Like we mentioned, also that the Spring/Summer 2025 Recreation Guide has been published, you have a copy of it this evening in front of you. The guide was published on CRPD's website at cordovarpd.gov on January 10, and residents should be receiving the printed guide in the mail within the next few weeks. Also, the printed guide is available at CRPD facilities, and then Shelby's also working with Bee Lopez to make sure that any new homeowner also gets the Recreation Guide in their, in their welcome bag, so that's pretty cool. And then the staff participated in several events, which included the December 7, CRPD's Breakfast with Santa, and then January 11 at the Polar Bear Plunge. Obviously, Parks and Recreation still have a ton of activities going on, cleanups, I'll let you read all about that in your board report, and then the only special event invitation that we have is for the Lunar New Year Celebration at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center on Wednesday, January 29 at 11:30 a.m. With that, that concludes my report.
How did, did everything make out with the wind, the last couple windstorms we had?
We're good. Thanks for asking.
Okay, good.
It's a great question, but so far, so, so good, yeah.
Just to note, again, we're continuing on with highlighting families in our community that have, you know, participated or highlighted in this rec guide, we have a family that is on the cover, and inside Page 4, there is a description of why they made the cover, so we're excited to continue that tradition in honoring our families that are participants and/or serving our district to support us, so.
Great job, Shelby.
It's always a team effort.
Yes.
Team. Okay, are we, we're in Item J now?
Item J1 is our Articles, Correspondence, and Public Outreach. This month, we have three newsletters, and Item J2 is our CRPD Calendar for January and February.
All right. Okay, then we can go to J1, J2. K. Oh, what's that say? How do you, how do you pronounce that? Ed Joramn? Well, I've got adjournments here, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting until I regularly scheduled board meeting for the Cordova Recreation and Park District on Wednesday, February 19, 2025.
Wow, what was that?
Crap the tacos.
That was as loud as the first time I did it.
I made a little whip thing for you. It's like.
You use the jokes?